Okay, so next we have callbacks for the Office of OPA. Are there any members here today wish to ask any questions for the Office of Property Assessment? Before we convene, I'd ask the department to come forward, state your name for the record, and state your reason for being here.
Good afternoon, Councilman Heenan and members of council. My name is Michael Piper. I'm the Chief Assessment Officer of the Office of Property Assessment. And in addition to several of my staff members, I have with me the Office of Property Assessment's Administrative Service Director, to my left, Alicia Wilds, and my Deputy Chief Assessment Officer, James Arrows Jr.
Okay, before we start, any other, any members here wish to ask any questions for OPA on the callbacks? My one question to you is, in the original hearings, there were questions for information, requests for information-
Yes.
-that would be provided to the Chair. Have you done so, or are you in the process of doing so now?
We actually have responded. I believe we just sent the responses, the final responses over earlier today, and we have responded.
Okay.
Yes.
So the responses are in.
Yes.
With that, I appreciate your time in calling back. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
It was very late. I have actually one physical copy I can pass up, but-
No, no, that's not the point. You're trying to kind of gather the, okay. I do have one question, if I may, Mr. Chair. So, one of the open conversations have been around the OPA assessments and the administration, and I think Councilman Green pressed on this last time, continues to take the position that we don't have the capacity to do reassessments as quickly as we would want. Controller's Office put out a report last week that says that there's potentially $30 million on the table. What is your response to that?
We continue to try to update the assessments, and our task, what we're tasked with, is making sure that the assessments are correct and accurate and uniform. And we understand the connection between the assessments and the revenue that the city may be looking for, but we don't address issues that come, that have to do with the revenue or the taxes themselves, it's just the assessments.
You could understand that, you know, serving on the board of the directors of a four billion dollar corporation, when a CEO tells you that they don't have the ability to do something quicker, other than a three-year cycle-
Right.
...it's a little bit difficult.
Sure.
Because your job is not to get revenue. Our job is to manage our revenue.
Yes.
And you understand the interconnection between the two of them. So, it is OPA's position that there's no way, and I know there's an RFP out, that we cannot ramp up the assessments, other than the current plan, which is land this year, commercial next, and residential.
Well, the RFP has been responded to, and where we are with the CAMA processes, we're quite far along. I think we're pretty close to actually having a vendor, without having to say too much about where the negotiations are at this point. But that aside, the assessment process is an annual process, and it involves an annual cycle, and it's a good thing it does. It's directly related to when the tax bills are sent out, so if you look at when folks are responsible for paying the taxes, it's a certain amount of time after the bills are sent out. But before the bills are sent out, we're responsible for giving the Revenue Department the assessment role. And I can kind of back the timeline up to show you how it is that we've actually started doing the commercial reassessment. We've started the initial process for that already, even though that's something that won't be completely finished until March the 31st of 2017. Now, and when you say, can we do it faster? I think the answer is, we can speculate on what values might be based on what we've seen, but-
I don't want speculation.
No, no.
I think that we're a billion-dollar corporation, and a three-year plan with leaving millions on the table, at a time when we're talking about controversial revenue streams, shouldn't be okay with people.
Sure.
A three-year plan should not be okay. And some of us don't think it's okay. We've said it, I think publicly we've said it. And I'm just hopeful that before we end this budget process, there is a revision of that plan. We're not asking people to cut corners. We're asking, we're, I'm asking, what is it that we need to get there quicker? Because we passed a law that says we were going to do annual assessments, and we're not.
I think we're willing to have discussions with members of council, and anyone that can maybe give us some recommendations to-
We want the how, we don't want the know.
Right.
We want the how.
Right.
How is it that we can get to a better place, that there is not a public perception that we're leaving money on the table, at a time when we need it? Particularly in light of the fact that over the next few years, the school district's going to come back to us next year, they're going to have a $100 million deficit. I mean, you don't need to make those financial decisions, we do. But I feel handicapped when I don't know how we get to a better place, so that we can assure people that we don't take the taxing of folks lightly.
Sure. I understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Some of the comments that Councilwoman Sanchez, I would just like to echo, the, there's a level of frustration in reference to what's going on with property assessments. I know the Office of Property Assessment is now doing the land assessment, and the recent article that was in Sunday's Inquirer, some of that information, members of this body knew even prior to the article, especially in reference to Titan Street, where the whole purpose of doing AVI was to get to a point of uniformity in reference to property assessments. And so, just from that one example, we went from pre-AVI situation, where you've had assessments on properties on that block in particular, were somewhat uniform, maybe off a few hundred dollars. We now go through a process of doing the land value increase, and that assessment is now wildly off for properties that pre-AVI was not off. And I just don't see how, I mean, what type of assurance can you give not only this body, but also the public at large, when we're next, you're going to go into commercial, and then go through the full implementation of CAMA, that's going to be done correctly? And I think that's one of the frustrations and challenges that I've seen, especially considering I've been in and around this building for a period of time, that we're not able to get this process done correctly. Especially now, we're getting to a point where we're almost going to be in an AVI Part Two, because of the time period since when we did it the first time.
So, I'm glad you brought up the 2017 reassessment project, because this is sort of an example of where what we do from year to year is always going to be imperfect. However, the goal is to try to tighten up the reassessment, so, you know, ideally, we're going to have commercial, residential, within a year or two of what the market shows us it should be, which is considered pretty tight, because we are always reacting to historical sales. The land reassessment project that we're in the process of completing took a little over a year, and the reason it takes so long, and the reason assessments typically take about a year, is because when we're finished with the process, we have to be in a position to defend them from the type of criticism that we see coming in, on what we just did. It means that when we do mass appraisal, and a taxpayer comes in and asserts that we've done something incorrect, or the value's inaccurate, or it's not uniform, even though we've done mass appraisal for over 400,000 properties, we have to look at each one of those properties individually, and address that particular appeal has a single property. We have to be able to say, okay, what we did in the context of this reassessment was correct, here's why. Or, the taxpayer brings us something and says, well, maybe you didn't understand this. You didn't know my, the condition of my property was not average, but below average. And that's how the appeal process works. We look forward to getting the FLRs, the First Level Review, the informal appeal applications coming in, so we can get an idea of what we did, and see if there's something we were missing in some areas, because we've heard from taxpayers, as I'm sure you guys have, that there's something on some blocks that might not look right. So, we need to know that. That's how we address it.
But what is the process of providing additional resources to get through the backlog and get it done properly now?
When you say backlog-
In reference to assessments, the, I mean, this, this entire process just seems very, either convoluted from the issues I've talked with people that I know who've had, just trying to get through a hearing, I mean, it's just been a significant backlog of process. And it seems that we, why can't we dedicate more resources now, and have that part of this budget process, in order to address some of the issues we're having with OPA?
Okay, so I think the hearing process, when the appeals, there was a backlog as a result of what we did for AVI, and it took, I'm going to say up until now, to kind of stem the flood of, you know, the part of the process in which BRT, OPA's been working on managing appeal hearings and processing revisions as a result of those hearings. As you know, when we first did this in 2014, we had over 50,000 informal appeals and over 25,000 formal BRT appeals, and we were not, we did, we were short on resources. We may have gotten fewer appeals than we expected, but we got a lot more than we could handle in the normal process manner, where we would normally get maybe 2,000 or 3,000 a year. At this point, I'm happy to say that the majority of the 2014 and 2015, which we didn't really have many appeals, have been handled, I'm going to say there's maybe 100 or 200 left for 14, 100 or 200 left for 15, and most of the revisions have been processed. We've sent that information over to Revenue. We still have some more to send over. So I think we've gotten to the point where that backlog has been addressed. And going forward, you know, hopefully, when we have a new system in place, when we do this again comprehensively, that backlog shouldn't be an issue.
So I have some more questions, but my time is up at this point. So, as we get ready for the process in a few years, are we going to be, although it won't nearly be the same level as it was from a few years ago, there's still a possibility of an increase of appeals. And you're saying our computerized system is going to be able to handle that, and our process will then have been streamlined, organized, and we'll be able to handle any increase in volume?
When we have a CAMA system in place in a couple of years, when we do a comprehensive reassessment, it should be able to handle any type of a backlog, especially if it's something that was at the level of what we got. I wouldn't expect that it would be more, because you're not going to see the substantial changes that you did in 2014 when we do this again. And as far as what we're doing this year, I can tell you, the filing deadline is May the 20th, for the First Level Review applications to come in, which is about a week or two away. And to date, as of yesterday, we checked, we've got about 3,200 First Level Review applications, so-
And one last question before my time's up. So how do we know CAMA will not be delayed again?
I'm sorry?
How do we know CAMA will not be delayed again?
How do we know it won't be delayed? We're moving forward. We're doing everything to, we can to make sure that we have something in place, hopefully,
So I just walked in the room, so I'm going to gamble that I'm supposed to call the next council member? No?
Yes, I wasn't going to keep going, but I know council is issued as well, so I'm going to pause for now.
So what am I doing?
Councilman Dow? Chair, we're going to ask Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, just-
Afternoon, Councilman Dow.
Different perspective for a minute. This is a good problem to have, because we're in a booming economy, the city's doing well. Business, private enterprise, government, over the last several years, I wasn't here, but you guys did a good job here, and helping the economy grow, and helping the city grow. The problem is, we haven't captured those values, as you know, in our taxation. But it's much better than '07 and '08, when market values were going down, and we were losing money. Okay? So, this is our time, basically, from hearing from my colleagues, this is our time to at least capture those values of revenue that we should have in cities' hands. So that's, I think, what I'm hearing. But it's a good problem to have. It's good, not a bad thing. I have one question, and I don't know how to answer it, and I thought about it after I had seen you, and that I should have asked you, but someone called me, the guy who wrote an article this weekend, the guy who wrote the article, said to me, "Tell me your opinion as to why a vacant piece of land on my block is valued at, pick a number, $10,000, and why my property, which has a market value of, pick a number, $300,000, has a market value of $75,000 for the piece of land? Can you explain just how that methodology works, why an empty lot's $10,000, and the house next door that's built on is worth $75,000 for the same piece of land?"
Councilman, that that's an easy answer, actually, and I think maybe we have not emphasized this enough in the information we've tried to put out there, but the answer to that is, the vacant land parcels that are in residential areas are part of this year's reassessment project. Okay? It's the part that remains unfinished.
Okay.
And by the end of June, as part of the 2017 reassessment, you'll see new values for pretty much all of 30,000 or so vacant land parcels. That's a fair question, but, you know, we're getting it every day.
That's great. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you. So, again, going back to our timeline, it took me several years, but we finally got the administration, the previous administration, to invest in LiDAR technology, and I'm hopeful that moving forward, the city would make an annual investment in LiDAR technology. How could that help you in building out your CAMA system for accuracy purposes?
I'm sorry?
And LiDAR is like, you know, overhead every data set in the city, which has been a challenge, because people don't really want to know what they have, because then they own it. How could that be helpful, since one of the issues is manpower, with the ability to view every single property?
Sure. Councilwoman Sanchez, if you don't mind, I'm going to ask my Deputy Chief Assessment Officer, James Arrows Jr., who's been in meetings with the city concerning that issue, to address that.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Council President Clark. As Mr. Piper said, my name is James Arrows, and I'm Deputy Chief Assessment Officer at the OPA. As far as the LiDAR technology, I've been on a task force with members of OIT and other departments, where there's a vacant property sort of model that they're coming up with, and we've tested some of the information that they've sent over to us, and based on their model, and using our information to see where maybe there's some differences, we've been able to pick up some properties that we would have no other indicators of knowing, that they were vacant or abandoned, just from walking by the street, from the outside, because they weren't boarded up, they weren't sealed in any permanent fashion. So, it would help us in terms of the accuracy, as far as being able to identify properties that have been unoccupied for long periods of time. And then, if we were coding that as a property that was, say, what we would consider average condition and occupied, and we were able to pick up that information, which is really a source that we didn't have access to before, we would be able to update our data a little quicker. There's a couple of different technologies that OIT is looking at, or looking to invest in, and all of them are really great tools that would help us do a lot more desktop review in a quicker fashion than, you know, our typical, we still need to walk the blocks, like is traditional, but as we get better technologies with the CAMA system, and some of these other projects, and task forces that have been out there, it will really help our evaluators process information a lot quicker, and therefore, when we get to the point where we're trying to, you know, with the new system, put out regular assessments on an annual basis, it'll be a lot more efficient, I think, with technology such as that.
Yeah, we're, I'm interested in figuring out the different utilizations. We could only sell it to the vacant property folks, but I think that having that annual assessment of our data sets could be hugely important in different applications. And this is, again, the frustration of, how are we going to do this? How are we going to get to CAMA, and then how do we manage CAMA moving forward, so that we have more real-time information is hugely important? I just got the, kind of, the project timeline that was circulated around 2:00 or so, around the OPA, the OPA plans, in terms of a vendor. And here, I see a little troubling in some of these approaches, up to 30 months. We're saying CAMA's going to be ready specifically when?
So-
Because like, when you start seeing 50, 30 months-
Yeah, you see a timeline, and the timeline is accurate and recent. However, a lot of what we do with a new CAMA system involves work that we do before the vendor is actually in the house. Okay? It may involve a subcontractor. It involves a lot of data cleanup and conversion. That's one of the most time-consuming things. So, without getting too much beyond what we sent you, there's something that we call Phase One of, you know, implementation, and, but there's also what we call Phase Zero, that really speaks to what we have to do before we actually have the software. We're actually looking to push the vendor, because we do have a timeline that we're looking to stick to, because of our commitments to do comprehensive reassessments.
Thank you, and I'll end with this. I just, again, I think the timeline, and I've said this, this is not your responsibility, but it's ours, you know, three years from now, the year before our election, people are going to get sticker shocked again. And having been here during the controversial conversion to AVI, and really trying to get folks there, I don't know how we explain that to folks. Because you're going to send out those notices right before our primaries, and people are going to be like, wait a minute, what's going on? I think, I think there has to be a readdressing of the timeline, and if the potential is there, as the controller has confirmed of some value, we need to do this a little bit better.
You understand the concern, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. One of the concerns that has been an issue for some time, has been the challenge in coordination between Revenue and OPA. Will CAMA address that issue?
CAMA will address a good bit of that issue.
From what capacity?
A CAMA, a CAMA program is not just something that will take three or four of our current systems and combine them into one. It's going to essentially be the system of record that will address valuations, appeals and exemptions, revisions that translate into recertifications that get to the Revenue Department, and that's in response to what you just asked. It, this is what a customized off-the-shelf CAMA system does, at the very least. We're asking for some additional things, but that's how it addresses that.
At what point will there be an opportunity for members of this body to see some type of, you know, demonstration or walkthrough of how this product will work?
Councilman Green, if you don't mind, I'm going to call Saskia Thompson, who is the Director of the Office of Property Data, which is the department that's driving the actual planning for our CAMA implementation.
Good afternoon, Saskia Thompson, Office of Property Data. So, in terms of when we could give a demonstration, we are in active negotiations right now. I would say, once that contract is signed and executed, we would be happy to set up a time where the vendor comes in and gives a demonstration, and shows everybody exactly what we are, what we're implementing, what you can expect to see when our project is complete.
And at that point, although I have not had a chance to see the timeline that Councilwoman Sanchez has, but at that time, we'll be able to ask questions to that vendor regarding the implementation, other questions and concerns that we may have regarding the rollout of CAMA?
Sure.
Okay. I just, I, it still just boggles the mind, considering where we were pre-AVI, going into this whole process, and we're just now, in 2016, getting to a point that years from now, we'll be having this type of model, when going into AVI at the very forefront, we knew that the goal was to do this on a regular basis, not annually, but at least a regular basis, and we're, I believe, setting ourselves up for an AVI Part Two, which is going to cause significant problems for the city. Outside of the fact that there's revenue that we should be having coming into the city that we're not getting, and who knows what may happen if a market downturn occurs? We do have a general election in the fall, heaven forbid if a certain person is 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, but the more recent, more critical issue is that we could have a downturn in markets and also real estate, and we lose some of the ability of capturing some of that revenue.
Thank you, Councilman. One quick question, Mr. Piper. We actually talked about this earlier, and first, thank you for coming to our tangled title meeting up in North Philadelphia.
Happy to do it, Council. Council President Green?
Also known as Swamp Poodle. Most people up there don't know that that's the name of their community, but that's what they have on the map.
Sure.
GMA's.
Yes.
So, and I ask you these questions, I just want to record, so, the particular GMA that caused the concerns that we expressed to you about the values on properties on the northern end of the GMA versus the southern end, which is down Dorado Avenue-
Right.
-versus Germantown Lehigh, and you've witnessed yourself on your trip up to that meeting, that clearly different. So, this issue about GMA's, is there going to be the potential revisit of that issue as it relates to GMA's from a geographical perspective? When Germantown Lehigh, and Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez has a real clear sense of that, because she actually represents that portion, and actually represented the other side of the street for a number of years, as it relates to Forth and Dorado, which is the border of Northern Liberties, how do we address those issues? Do we cut down the GMA's, or have it more reflective of comparable values, as opposed to having this broad GMA with such disparity in terms of the conditions of properties? What are we going to do about that?
So, we are going to be looking at the GMA's as they exist now. I think we currently have about 600, about a little over 600, and that changes every time we do any type of reassessment project, because the GMA boundaries change. We looked, when we looked at that specific issue that you asked about, we actually looked at an entire zone, and we looked at the GMA that the property was in, and we looked at a base GMA that had a lot more sales, and then we trended those sales to come up with an estimate of value. Now, for, to answer your question, we are looking at the GMA's in terms of, you know, maybe having fewer in some areas, because we need to see that the GMA's accurately reflect what, you know, what sales prices come in at.
Well, I might be talking about more.
How many?
Because in that particular case, the GMA was too big.
Right, right.
You know, some-
Yeah, it was, right. In that particular GMA, it may, it was, actually, it was the zone, I think, that was too big, because the zone captured an area that it-
Okay, it was a zone, well, I don't know what it was.
Yeah, it was a zone.
It was a broader swath of-
Right.
...analysis, because it was clearly a disparity in the property values, the conditions, even talked about-
Sure.
-the Fodderell Square Record Center.
We recognize that could be a problem, so we are looking at that.
So we're going to look at that-
Yes.
-in particular, in any similar situations?
Sure.
And then we'll do what?
When we do a reassessment-
Because I tell people every day, and they say, yeah, Councilman, I said, let me look into that, right?
Sure.
Then he's looking into it, then he's like, okay, I'm going to look into it.
Well, when we say we're looking into it, in other words, with the GMA's themselves, we may be looking to, it may be a matter of, we need- we may be looking to, it, it may be a matter of, we need to have fewer in some areas, and, and more in some, but it's, I think it's the zone problem, where the zone covers, say for instance, I think that was Zone G, that covers a good section of North Philadelphia, and it includes 12th and Girard, 12th and Lehigh, which we know, and you've made the point, and you're right, those are actually two very different areas, and you can see that driving up 11th Street.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So we'll look at them and do, and do what?
We'll, we'll look to make a, we'll, we'll look to make a revision of, of the GMA like, like we would normally do, yeah.
All right, there you go, okay, I'm good. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, there'll be no additional questions, committee will stand at recess until Wednesday, May 11th, 2016, at 10:00 a.m., at which time we will reconvene in room 400. Thank you all very much.